I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of May 11, 2015, to order. And we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call shows, our department heads are here. We do have one missing council person, Mrs. Beth Dixon, who is out on bereavement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I spoke to Bev a few hours ago. She said she's still grieving the loss of her husband, and she asked to be excused. And she also told me that she plans on being back next month and looks forward to hitting the campaign trail. And she asked that I excuse her, so I moved to excuse Bev Dixon.
I'll support that.
Further discussion? Okay, on your behalf say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Approval of the minutes from April 27.
I'll move the minutes. One second.
Further discussion? On your behalf say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Approval of bills?
Lloyd, you got a lot of cars that got fixed up this last month.
Toward the end of the budget year, that's what happens to us with the older cars. The repair bill really, bills really go up.
Right, squeeze that budget. I didn't have anything. I'll move the bills. I'll support. Excuse me, I'll support.
You sure?
Yeah.
Further discussion? I just wanted to note, I noticed that we had a backhoe get the window replaced. I take it backhoes don't have glass insurance?
Correct.
To the tune of $359. Okay. All right, on your behalf say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, approval of the agenda?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
In the minutes, I think I requested that the Musser Kane be put on the agenda, so they can discuss as far, or did you just waive their, did you do that? Your fee, that was a discussion about the fee, and they were seeking permission and all that for their fundraiser.
I think that was still supposed to be on here, but I haven't heard anything else from them.
I haven't heard anything from them, and that was, Lisa and I actually discussed it as I was putting the budget together, and I forgot to put it on there. That was a mistake on my part. The council can choose to add it. I had forgotten about that. One of the challenges we do have in waiving the fee, well, in having this as an agenda item, is he hasn't applied, you can't waive, you're, he has to pay the fee in order to find out whether he is going to get approved or not, and it's a $50 fee, which is why we're going to put it back on the agenda. The challenges, Chief Collins and I have spoken, and more than likely, the adjacent business will not sign permission for them to have the event if they do it outdoors, which creates a problem for them having the event and submitting the application.
Why don't we just have it for a discussion item tonight?
I'm fine with that.
Because I don't, I don't think that there's a reason to waive it anyway, so.
Well.
Okay, I will put it on my list to bring up during my time.
All right, that's, I'm fine with that.
Seven?
No, she's going to do it during her manager's report.
During my manager's report.
Oh, okay.
So we can discuss it.
So, you need a motion for the agenda as is?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
Any other further discussion? Okay, on your behalf say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. Now we have time for a little public comment. This time, if anybody wishes to comment anything that's not listed on the agenda, can we call, anybody? State your name and address.
Should I speak here?
Sure, yes, dear. Right there at the microphone, yep.
You know, this looks like a stick, but it's really important, so. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathy Crawford, and I'm the state representative that represents you as a part of this district. I'm very happy to be here. I feel very much at home here, because I've lived in the region, in Novi anyway, for over 70 years, so I've been around a long time, and was very much involved with your senior center for years and years, and with some of the staff there. So, I'm happy to be here to give you just a little brief update of what's going on. I wanted to tell you a little bit of information about the committees that I'm on, in case you ever have any concerns, or you want to come to Lansing to testify, or you want to know more about any given issue. I'm on five different policy committees, which is a little unusual for a freshman. I know I don't look like a freshman, but I really am a freshman. The committees that I'm on is health, and I'm on families, children, and seniors, as well as regulatory reform, and workforce and talent development, which is a new committee, and I'm also the majority vice chair for, of the Capitol Committee, which is the building itself. You're welcome to come to the House Office Building at any time. You just get a visitor pass. My office is on the eighth floor. I'd be happy, also, if you were coming to the Capitol while we're in session, which is Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, I'd be happy to recognize you and announce your attendance to the floor of the House. So, my office is, as I said, in the 38th District, and it is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m., I mean, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Some people have said, "Well, I tried to call you and nobody was in your office." Well, I have two staff, Amy Smith, who is in the office, Monday through Friday, year-round, so there's no, they're only off for a holiday, and then Ruth Ann Jurassic is my other staff person that you will probably see out in the district, passing out booklets and doing a variety of different things, she and I together. So, if you call and there's no answer, it doesn't mean somebody is not there. It just means she may be on the other line. She might be talking to someone, and she'll get back with you if you leave a message. It's really important for you to leave a message when you call. The 38th District, for those of you that may not be aware, includes the city of Novi, Novi Township, the Oakland County portion of Northville. It also includes the city of Wild Lake, the city of South Lyon, and Lyon Township, and that includes about 90,000 residents. And each one of the state reps has a district that has approximately 90,000 residents. So, people have asked me too, one of the questions they've asked me is, "Well, do you live in Lansing now? Do you have a house there or something?" No, I drive back and forth. We're not that far away from Lansing. I kind of joke, sometimes there's not anything good that happens in Lansing after nine o'clock at night, so I try to get home at least by then. And I don't, I, I go there usually on session days for sure, and sometimes other days. So, you know, the springtime is a great time for you to come and visit our historic Capitol. It is, the grounds are beautiful, plus the building itself is beautiful. So, speaking of spring, I brought something for you that is historic. On the Capitol grounds, on the east lawn, there is a very large tree. In fact, it's the largest tree of its kind in the entire United States, and it's a Catalpa tree. And this Catalpa tree is the largest and the oldest Catalpa in the entire United States. And so, what I brought for you today is a seedling, one-year-old seedling, from that Catalpa tree. And I thought you can choose a place to plant it somewhere, and I have the instructions in a little Ziploc bag here that will tell you how and where. And you might be interested to know that the Catalpa was on the Capitol grounds when they were building it in the 1870s. There are pictures of that Catalpa tree. And it was, it was a tree that was very popular among settlers in Michigan because of its strength, and also because it was really great for fence posts and a variety of other things. So, a lot of the settlers used Catalpa trees, almost to the extent where we didn't have any anymore. So, I hope you'll find a nice place for this Catalpa tree, and maybe you can tell a little bit about what it is. I know you have a great deal of business before you tonight, so I don't want to take any more time. I just wanted you to see me, and I wanted to see you, and let you know that I'm available at any time. I'll leave some cards, some business cards here, with the city manager, with the clerk's office, so that if any of you would like to call me, I would like to hear your concerns. Also, if you like something, that would be kind of fun to hear, too.
A change.
Maybe unusual, but I would like to hear that. And of course, you know, we're all, we're working hard to try to come up with a solution for the roads. That's something that is really high on everybody's priority list, and I know that you know all about that. We're trying to find a long-term solution, which is what is needed. So, I'm working very hard, and I'm very honored, really, to represent you in the 38th District, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah. Shall I leave the tree? Thank you very much.
As a tree city, that'll be nice.
Right, you know we're a tree city, so I thought that's why you were awarding it to us.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Come on, Dave.
We got a gentleman here. He's been sitting here up front. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Scott Ward. Over the last 15 years, I've had a jewelry shop here in town. But tonight, I'm here to speak to you about medical marijuana. I became a licensed medical marijuana caregiver a little over a year ago, after I met a young man who returned from Iraq who are a lot different than when he went in.
Can you talk into the mic more closely? They can't hear on video.
Being a veteran myself, I had a lot of sympathy for this young man. And if any of you have seen the Dr. Sanjay Gupta report on CNN, there's no arguing the benefit of medical marijuana. My goal here tonight is to begin the process of opening transparent, discreet, and compliant medical marijuana dispensary here in town. Over the years, I've developed a great relationship with the South Lyon Police Department, and I look forward to working with the city attorney and opening a clean, safe environment where people can obtain medical marijuana here in town.
Well, we just passed an ordinance for it, so.
No, that's not the same thing. That's not the same. He's talking about a dispensary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's all right. We're not supposed to comment on anything you say right now, but that's fine. We're glad you're, you're making it known what your, what your plans are.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
What jewelry store does he own?
Outway Kroger.
Okay, that's the one I thought it was. I just wasn't sure. I just wanted to make sure.
Max runs it, too. Yeah. Go ahead, Dave.
Good evening. My name's David Law. I'm your new district court judge. I was appointed by the governor back in February of this year, so I wanted to take the opportunity, I've been eagerly awaiting, actually, the opportunity to be able to come out, South Lyon, and introduce myself, introduce myself to you, council members, Mayor Wallace, council members, as well as the community, to say hello, open the lines of communication, and let you know just a little bit about myself. By way of background, I've worked in private practice in a small firm, former Oakland County prosecutor. I was a state rep for four years, representing the Commerce Township, Wolverine Lake area, and most recently, before I was appointed, I worked in the Michigan Attorney General's Office, trying cases of child abuse, child neglect, child sex assault, many, many sex assault cases. I've also been a township trustee for Commerce Township since 2011. So, but I've never had the opportunity to represent South Lyon, so I'm excited to be a part of the community now as your new district court judge. And I thought it was important for me to come out today and introduce myself and open that line of communication, and let you know how important it is to me, and how excited I am to work with you, to work with the community, to work with law enforcement, to help keep our streets safe. Just a little bit, I know in the past, there's been some concern about the court, and there's been a little controversy going on the last couple of years. I can promise you, that's a thing of the past. It's, since I've been there now, since February, I've been really impressed with, A, the staff, I mean, we really do. We have hard-working, dedicated, caring staff that really does care about the community, and it shows, as well as the other two judges, Travis Reeds, Rob Bondi. It's been a pleasure for me to be able to work with them, and their, how much they care about the community and the district shows in their work as well, and I hope it'll show in mine. So, really, that was the whole purpose of me coming out here today, just to say hello. I would welcome the opportunity, if you were willing to have me back, if I promised to keep it short, but I know Judge Reeds has also expressed an interest with me, to maybe come back and make a presentation to you, if we can get on the agenda quick, maybe 10 minutes, just what we do at the court, how many cases we handle, what are the types of cases we see, what sort of programs and so forth do we have for the community, and so forth. So, if you've had, if you would have an interest in that, we would love the opportunity to come back and address you.
I wanted to quickly give you some food for thought on that also, as far as, we've had it done in the past, McKinsey was good for that. I'm talking about court being held in the high school.
Absolutely.
Would you consider doing something like that?
Absolutely. So, I just actually met your retiring superintendent on the way in, and I mentioned that very thing to him, so, and he said he would pass along the message. So, absolutely, we'll do that for sure.
Mm-hmm, sounds great.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. We can move on to our public hearing on our proposed budget for 2015, 2016.
Do you have to officially open it before I speak?
I open the public hearing.
Okay. The proposed budget for 2015, 2016 has a total mill levy of 13.75 mills for city operations and debt, which is the same as the 14, 15 year. There are a couple of things that the council needs to consider, and I believe I put a memo on each of your desks that shows the changes between what we had talked about in the work session and what is in the final proposed budget. The first, in the final proposed budget, we do have the finalized 2015 assessed, assessing numbers from the county and the revenues that will be generated from those, if all of the taxes are collected, and therefore, I have put that in. It's on a blue sheet in your notebook, as well as proposed revenues for the 16, 17 year. That, that increase is just using a conservative 3% increase based on what the county is suspecting values will go up, plus what we're looking at with additional building permits that have been pulled thus far. One of the things that the council does need to make a decision on is the fire truck, and whether we are doing that out of fund balance, or doing a long-term purchase agreement on that. So, that is also shown in the same section, the initial page, that says 101 general fund revenues. At the top, shows what your fund balances will be at the end of 2015, 2016, on the white page, if we pay for the vehicle out of long-term debt of $550,000. On the yellow sheet, it shows you what the fund balances will be, if we would pay for that out of cash reserves. And that by providing all of the changes for you on colored pages, it would make it easier for you to go back and forth between what we talked about in the workshop, and also be able to see what we're talking about. The general fund revenues page, both of them also include a line that is called, I have to find it, 675.6. It's called donations to Cultural Arts Commission. That way, you can see that it is specifically spelled out, the private donations that are made to the Cultural Arts Commission. Actually, I just noticed it's not on the white page, but it is on the yellow page. Need to get that corrected, whichever way we adopt it, so they understand that we do have their money segregated out, even though it's in the general fund, so they know what their donations are. I think that's a very important thing. Along with that, in the fire tab, is information that shows you the impact on the overall fire department budget, whether we do the long-term purchase agreement, or the cash purchase. All it does is change it by $550,000, well, actually, $430, because you're looking at a $70,000 payment each year. So, your total cost would be, or your total budget for fire, if you do a purchase agreement, would be $518,090 or $998,090, depending upon whether we do cash or a long-term purchase agreement. We did lay out for you in a separate tab under the general funds section, the Cultural Arts Commission budgets, along with narrative, and for the Cable Commission, narrative, and a budget for them, based on their requests for the upcoming year, so that you can see those all spelled out, but they do stay under the general fund. Talked to the city's auditor about possibly separating them out under their own fund, but the costs of opening up separate checking accounts for those two would actually eat up any donations that those funds take in, so it doesn't make sense. It also becomes an additional cost from the auditing standpoint, because they're auditing additional funds, so it makes more sense to keep both of those under the general fund. The last thing, and this is a very positive thing, we found out on Thursday, just as your budget books were coming out under the CDBG tab, we had originally thought we were getting approximately 20,000 in our, or 23,000 in our CDBG allotment for this year. We were called by Oakland County on Thursday, and they informed us that the city had been allocated, based on population growth, an additional $8,014 in CDBG funds for the upcoming year, realizing that both the senior center and Haven are very important to the community, and both deserving funds did not want to short or slight either one of them. I split those funds evenly between the two, which changes the total allocation for the city and CDBG revenues of $34,761, with $28,254 going to the senior center, and $6,507 going to Haven.
I thought we, historically, we've paid Haven $5,000.
Historically, out of CDBG funds, we have paid them $2,500. We paid them $5,000, but the rest comes out of general fund. So, they're getting, they'll get their $5,000, but they'll also get an additional $4,000 more that they, we had not anticipated, because we're able to give them more out of CDBG funds than we've ever had before.
That's for, that's for who?
Haven.
Haven. That's the domestic violence, sexual abuse shelter program.
Why would we, I'm sorry. We haven't done more than $5,000 since I've been on council. I agree. Yeah.
And that's.
That's what they expect.
Well, then, we can change it. We can reallocate, that's why we're having the hearing. We can reallocate the funds back down to $2,500, and move the rest back to the senior center.
That's, that would be my choice, actually.
I would agree. That, that would be the better place. And then, if Haven finds a need, a higher allocation, at some point, they can come and ask for it, and we can split it ourselves.
All right, so that would make the split, the senior center getting $32,261, and Haven remaining at $2,500.
And that still saves some money from the general fund, am I right?
Well, it leaves the general fund, yeah, it still gives them $2,500 from the general fund.
That's all good.
Yep.
Well, that's good. Got her buttoned up.
Okay, Harvey?
I've got a comment on the second page, the footnote page, if you will, to the yellow.
Okay.
The very last two and a half sentences, using increased, using fund balance to cover increased costs for wages and fringes for empty positions, transitioning to full-time community development, negotiated increases. Any use of, of fund balance for ongoing programs or salaries is going to diminish that to nothing within a very short time. Capital improvements, one-time expenditures, that's what I would expect the fund balance to be used for. I'm very opposed to ongoing programs.
And I understand that. I just, because there's such a significant change in the fund balance, I wanted to point out what those differences were, which is why it talks about the overall increase in wages, fringes for those empty positions, and transitioning that community development to a full-time. We will look for ways in the next budget year to make sure that that is not an ongoing decrease in the fund balance.
Okay, Jill?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. The first is about the full-time employee moving from the part-time to the full-time. Do we have a job description that we're going to be creating for this position?
Yes, we do. When, once it's approved, we'll be working on developing the position more into a full-time position, including developing the full-time job description and bringing that to the council for their final approval. A lot of the duties that I plan to add on to her is more economic development. Right now, she spends the majority of her time doing community development with the planning and the zoning and the DDA. The goal is to have her do more economic development, working with existing business owners, and working to fill our empty businesses that we have in the downtown area and elsewhere in the community, to make sure that we can expand our retail and commercial businesses.
So, one of my concerns is that I would have liked to see the job description before we actually vote on it, to know what we're, what the measurables are, what kind of grants are expected, how they're going to be obtained, that sort of thing. Because when we interviewed you, that was one of the selling points, for me at least, was that you had a lot of knowledge with grants, so I think she would be doing a lot of responsibilities that should be dedicated for you. So, I kind of have an issue with approving a full-time employee without knowing what the exact job descriptions are.
I understand that. I wish you had brought that up at the budget workshop, and I could have spent the last couple of weeks making sure that I had that ready for you.
Okay. And then, also, I noticed the legal fees. I know we were audited at $78,304, but then, but our original budget from 20,000, 2014 to 2015 was $60,000. Now, we're up to $75,000. What's the main, do we have any reason, if we're going to have a, some cost containment in place to try to not go over budget again, or what's the main driver for increasing it that much money from?
The main driver for increasing it that much was just based on the audited figures. The intent is for us not to go over that and actually stay closer to the retainer, and I'm trying to work with Tim, but it's also going to be, I know, based on his contract is up for renegotiation, and so I had to leave leeway for that.
So, that's kind of what, another issue I have, is that I really think that we shouldn't be, we should be trying to contain as much legal fees as we have, and not just automatically put money in there anticipating a price increase. I've been very consistent in saying that I think we're paying, I'd say, too much in legal fees, so I really kind of have issue with increasing it, instead of, I would prefer to see a decrease, in fact. That's me personally. Those were all, all my comments. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the, the fire truck? Because I, personally, I think we should end up doing a one-time expenditure myself. Just, having money sitting in the bank isn't going to earn anything, so, and interest is still substantial, so personally, I think we should just get it out of the way, right out of the gates.
And there is the possibility that we may be able to get a better deal paying for it without financing it.
I'm all for it.
But, as I said, I was asked at the budget workshop to show both of those, which is why I provided both sets of numbers. I agree with Harvey on the fund balance. I'm not, I'm not happy in the direction that it's going and for what it's going for. I have a problem with that in this budget.
It is pretty fluffy. I mean, you know, that's pretty soft to end up saying we want to end up instituting a full-time employee from a part-time without having things established and set up to be able to cover the finances. It's a, it's sort of hoping that things drop into place to, to get it off of the fund balance side of things to make up the difference, so it would be nice to have something a little bit more solid to go by leading into that. When's the anticipate, are you waiting till July to?
Yes, the position would, the position would not go full-time until July 1st at the very earliest.
I think it would be valuable to have, have her working on those issues. It's just that, you know, I mean, I do share the, the concern, would dip in into fund balance to cover a, a solid position, so, and then scrambling to, to see if we can cover the difference in cost.
Yeah, one thing just that would be helpful for me would be, even if we were to see something like what grants we're going to be going after, that's something I requested, and, not to you, but in the past, of what kind of grants we're going to approach, what we've applied for, something that the public can see what we're really driving at.
Mike?
Hey Lynn, I do have one question on the proposed 2016, 2017 current property tax anticipated. There's a drop of like almost $200,000.
The reason for that is, in the 1516 year, we are raising the operations mill levy to 10.3212 with the current plan in 2016, 2017, to move that portion of the mill levy, that other .5838, back to the capital improvement fund, which is why you see a decrease in the 1516 general fund property tax revenues.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I mean, we've got two, two kind of floating issues, the fire truck and the full-time issue, and are we going to look for some consensus on both of those things so we can move forward?
Well, my, my vote is to just pay off the fire truck. I, I just, if we, we have the money, I mean, just for sake of reference, the last time we purchased a fire truck, we did a, was it a 10-year?
Seven-year.
10-year bond?
Sixty grand.
Which we paid 60 grand in interest.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's something we need, and hopefully we can get some money for the sale of the other one that we can offset the cost, but I would rather pay it upfront if we have the money, as opposed to having another long-term obligation, debt obligation.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, in eight, we were kind of at the precipice of the downturn, so, you know, to, to take all of our cash out to buy a truck was not a very good idea, so things have changed.
I'm all for just buying it outright and getting it taken care of.
What about the idea of having, if you can try to solidify some funding sources to offset the cost of going full-time, you know, get, working on it now, we can make an amendment during the course of the next budget cycle if, if things pan out.
And that's fine. I, the, the budget is the policy of the council, and if that's what they would like us to do, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I mean, does that seem workable to you?
That seems workable, yes.
I don't have any difficulty with the concept of using some fund balance just to balance the budget, but it's the dedication of fund balance to certain, certain ongoing programs or positions, that's where the rub is. To balance the budget, and we've done this in the past years, and then as we, as we experience favorability in our budget throughout the year, we, we don't have to use that fund balance, and we end up sometimes even adding to our fund balance. For, for the paper balancing of it, I don't have a problem with it. It's in the execution of the budget as we go through the fiscal year that I, I think we need to be very, very careful not to, not to dedicate those fund balance funds to ongoing programs. That's, that's just got to be understood by everyone, and I hear that consensus at this table.
Correct, and I fully understand that. I would like to point out, that is one of the reasons why I chose not to put our vision insurance out to bid this year with the change in our medical insurance in December, without a full year under our belt and understanding the true costs of the new insurance carrier and the new insurance. I didn't want to make any changes to any of our vision or dental insurance that would make that unstable and make a significant potential impact.
Right, get some history to see, yeah, right. But I think that if you can create some demonstrables to, to your point, Harvey, if she can identify funding sources, you know, the idea of making an amendment down the road to, to cover that, I think is perfectly appropriate, so.
And we're going to encourage budget amendments anyway, right?
Yep, that's, that's what I'm all about. Things change, so you have to react.
Well, and, as I said, July 1st would be the earliest. We would not have to bring this position on full-time July 1. What we could do is between now and the beginning of the fiscal year, put together the job description for the council to approve, and then the community development director and I work to develop the resources and identify how we're going to pay for the position going full-time, and then bring that for the council, to the council for approval before the position goes full-time.
Right, there's, and there's no, you've got plenty of time to do that because the job isn't funded full-time until July.
Correct.
So both issues have been addressed.
Yeah, well, except for, okay, so we're going to approve the budget with it in there, and then, once the funding source flips, so we're not pulling it out of fund balance, we'll just, we'll make an amendment to throw the fund balance back in?
It just won't be spent.
Yeah.
But, yeah, as, as revenues come in, it just won't be spent. But if, if the worst happens and it doesn't come in, it's going to come out of fund balance in 2015, 16.
Yeah, see, personally, my, I would prefer we end up not putting it in the budget and making an amendment. Once everything is in order and it's ready to go online, then we make an amendment to the budget to, to account for that, that position.
No, this is our policy, this is our policy document, and I think we discussed at the budget workshop, that the policy, or that the, the wishes of the council and the administration are to have that full-time economic development officer, so why not fund the darn thing and let's get it going?
Well, I mean, there's an awful lot of things that would be great to do if you wanted to, if you were willing to pull it out of fund balance.
Right, but we didn't add any of those into the budget, other than the fire.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So I, I think I can, I think I can live with it.
Yeah, well, I, I'm counting on, on assertive pursuit of finding cost containment and some ways to fund this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could roll with that.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, aye, ma'am. All right, may I, by the way, the public, no comments?
Yeah.
This was your time to run. They're all asleep. All right, I'm going to close the hearing then. Back to our proposed budget for 2015, 16 to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the.
Actually, approving the budget doesn't take place till new business.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's down at new business.
Oh, we're down to new business, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Business item to take care of first.
That was our hearing.
That's a close one.
That's why it's not on.
Yep, we can go to old business, and that is a review of the NOS Development Tree Inspection Report.
I'm Carmen Avantini, the planning consultant for the city, and you should have a letter dated May 8th, and this is the, my report, my tree inspection report that's addressed to Kristin Delaney. And let me just give you a little background on the process that we typically follow when we have a project like this, and there are trees that are to be preserved. The way it usually works is the, once the project is approved, the applicant's consultant engineer submits a basically tree protection plan, which is, this is based on all the information that was presented during the approval process. This is where we think the tree fence for protection should be located. It's then reviewed administratively by myself and Kristin, and we decide either yea or nay, you have to adjust it, but, and we look at the grading plan, we look at where the utilities are supposed to be going, we look at the lot layout, and, and obviously the final plan in its entirety, and then we decide either yes, that's where the tree fence is supposed to go, or no, it isn't. Once that is approved, then the applicant can put the tree fencing in, we go out and do an inspection to make sure that's the right location per the plan, and then after that, then the applicant, you know, after going through the, the final construction review process, would then be free to cut down any trees that aren't protected by that snow fence. Okay? What ended up happening here is, we were told that they were not going to take any trees down during phase two, they were only going to take down trees during phase one, and when I went out to inspect the tree, the snow fencing for phase one, they had already taken down some trees in the phase two area, so basically they jumped the gun. So what I did was, basically took a step back, because the planning commission was saying, did they take down trees they weren't supposed to? And I said, I couldn't either confirm nor deny that because we didn't go through our normal process that we go through. So I, I discussed this with the engineer, we took a timeout and said, okay, let's take a step back, let's review this as if nothing had happened, okay? Let's locate where that tree fence should have gone, based on the grading, the landscaping, or the, the grading utilities and, and all of those items in the final approval, and show me where you think it should be located. And he did that, gave a plan that showed where it should be located. We then reviewed it administratively, and we agreed with the location of, on the plan of that, where the snow fencing should go. And that's the, it actually is in two plans. So once we, once the, that was agreed to, they did put up the snow fencing for the remainder of the site. I went out there and physically reviewed it, inspected the trees that, the border, inspected all the trees to make sure the tags were outlined, and, and basically came to the conclusion that there were two trees that were removed that weren't supposed to have been removed out of the entire site, and they were located right here. And actually, those were trees, there were about four trees that I asked them to include in the preservation area after they went through the approval process, so actually those were trees originally that were going to be removed, but then I asked them to save them. So they, but they, there were two they were supposed to save. The other thing I noticed during the inspection, that there were actually, there was one on the west side of the site, a very large tree, that's in tree number 1415, that was saved, that wasn't supposed to be saved according to the plan. And then there were five trees that are located along the, it would be the main open space going down the center of the site, there were trees along, that right on the edge of the property line, that would be on the east side. So they saved those, and those were shown on the plan to, to be removed. So my, in my opinion, I think that they are in substantial compliance with the trees that were to be removed, and in fact, they saved some additional trees. In my mind, the trees that they are saving versus the two that were taken out, I think it's a wash in terms of replacement. They, you know, the, the remainder of the site is, that's not protected by the snow fence, is set to be graded and, and turned into a residential development. So I, I think the, the big issue that the planning commission had through all of this is they didn't know. They didn't know whether the developer was in compliance or not, and I couldn't answer the question because he hadn't gone through the process, the normal process that we follow. But I feel comfortable now that he is substantially in compliance. He still has to go through a pre-construction meeting and meet all the engineers' requirements before he can actually be given the go-ahead to begin the full-blown development and construction of the project. But in terms of the tree issue, I, I feel very comfortable that they've done what they said they would do, and they've saved the trees that they've said they would save. And just, so you know, too, the majority of the land, that, over the entire site, and it's a pretty big site, there were really only 25 total out of that big site that was cleared, only 25 total trees that were approved to be removed. The vast majority of the landmark trees are located on the eastern side of the site, which was the goal of the project all along, was to maintain the majority of the landmark trees, vast majority of the landmark trees. So, once again, I think they're in substantial compliance with the approval, but now, at least we, we're certain, and it's not a question mark. So I don't know if you have any additional questions on that?
Do we have a signed agreement?
We do.
Great.
I, I signed it.
All right. So is the snow fence in place right now? Everything's been marked, everything's clear as to what gets cut or taken down, what doesn't? No issues with that?
No, and the reason we use a snow fencing is because if you're an equipment operator, it's very easy to see, and you know not to go beyond it. There was one, there was, there were a couple, now that with these trees, the only change they need to make is these trees that are going to be saved, the swapping off, they have to pull the snow fencing out and protect those. But I've talked to the engineer, and he said it, it shouldn't be a problem at all.
So where are we now in the process? We have the signed agreement, we have the snow fence properly installed. What's next?
The next step is the pre-construction meeting with the developer, and our engineer, Bob Martin, myself, and I assume Mr. Cook, Carmen, will sit down and?
So then we have to give the go-ahead for that to actually take place, or now that everything's in compliance, that it's just a normal course of events?
That's just a normal course of action.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I was, you know, the, if I remember from reading your little thing, the trade-off was an elm and a hickory or something for five cottonwoods. I don't know how much those neighbors are going to be thrilled by having, you know, the falling out of cottonwood stuff, but, but I'm glad that it was as marginal as, as it was, you know, for the mistaken trees, so that's a big step. Just walking the bike path, though, I was kind of stricken by, maybe it was just brush and bramble or something that had been stripped from, there's quite an incline in a great deal of that, that's, that's fronting that bike path, and for it to have been stripped like that, was it just a bunch of junk that had gotten pulled out? Because, I mean, what are you going to get to take there for soil retention?
Yeah, any areas like that where it, it has been cleared, once the, you know, as they're putting the infrastructure and so forth, they're going to have to make sure that any slopes like that are seeded and stabilized, they can't allow it to erode.
I'm assuming there's a lot of land balancing that'll go on, so it'll probably be diminished to some degree, but, yeah, you're not going to get anything to hold on there, except for sod, maybe, so.
Yeah.
I know.
Pardon me?
Not right now.
Yeah, all right. Well, I'm glad we're over this hump too. Man, we're, we're really cruising.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Carmen.
Okay, now we can go on to new business and consider approval of the resolution for the budget, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen seventeen.
There's actually, there's one resolution that is in your packet, and the city attorney informed me this afternoon that there's actually two resolutions that's normally passed. One that separates and identifies each of the mills as associated with each fund. The second resolution actually is a resolution that says what the total amount is being spent of the budget in the general fund, as well as lists out the additional funds of the city. That second resolution is on your desk. The one that you will want to approve of those second funds is the second page, because that has the amount in it for paying for the fire truck in cash, which, and then now therefore it be resolved paragraph. It's, has a budget document on a summary page detailed on the following pages, and the total amount of five million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighteen. That is the resolution that would need to be approved, if we're paying for a fire truck out of cash on ballots.
Want some fire away? Hey Harvey.
I'd like to move the resolution that is included in our packet, that certifies the city assessor, spreading the assessment rules, sets the millage rates. And sets the entire millage rate for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget not to exceed thirteen point seven five mils. I'll move that resolution.
I'll support.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And then I'll move the resolution that was on our desk, that adopts a two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal budget, as shown in the budget documents on the summary page, and detailed on the following pages, and a total amount of five million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, and demonstrates the fund numbers and general service, debt service.
I'll support.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, did we have two noes?
I said no.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a text that the outside doors are locked and somebody wanted in. And I don't, it came in a little while ago, because I had it off on the thing, is the outside public doors locked?
They were unlocked at seven o'clock when I checked them.
Maybe the school thing.
It was the school board that actually just texted me.
I can go check them and take care of it.
Okay, just if somebody wants to come in, they have to be able to get in. Not to interrupt, but...
You ready? Move on at the first reading, the ordinance to repeal, repeal section eighty-two dash seventy-four sidewalks to be cleared of snow and ice, to clarify and provide that a violation of chapter eighty-two is a municipal infraction.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to have David Gillum from my office, Johnson Rosati, who is your prosecuting attorney for the city. He joined our firm last year and has been handling the city's prosecutions. He brought this to my attention, I thought this would be a good opportunity for him to meet you and for you to meet him. And David has a wealth of municipal experience, he's the former city attorney for Royal Oak, as well as the deputy city attorney. He was the city attorney for Wald Lake, the assistant city attorney for Novi, as well as its prosecutor, and he also served in prosecutorial, prosecutorial positions with the state of Michigan in Oakland County. David Gillum.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As Tim has indicated, I joined Tim's firm in January of this year, and since then I've had the pleasure of working with the city of Wixom, I'm doing the ordinance prosecutions for the city of Wixom, and also working with Chief Collins and the men and women of his department. I'm enjoying it very much. I do have experience in the fifty-two-one district court before, as Tim has indicated, I was assigned there when I worked with the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office a long time ago, when I first started practicing law. In addition, I spent five years there as the prosecuting attorney for the city of Novi, and for Lyon Township as well. And it's good to be what really kind of feels like being back home again with me there. As Judge Lawd indicated, there have been some changes over at the court, but it's a, it's a place that I feel very comfortable with and enjoy practicing very much. So, nice to meet all of you. Now, in fact, the issue that I'm here on tonight is something that was brought to my attention by a member of Judge Law's staff. The court was trying to go through and basically close out an old file that involved a violation of the section of the city code that requires snow to be removed in front of developed property. And in fact, that's what the code requires, anytime there is developed property, that is, property that has a structure on it, property that has utilities running to it, things like that, there needs to be a sidewalk. And in addition to there having to be a sidewalk, the sidewalk has to be maintained. And part of the maintenance of the sidewalk involves clearing the sidewalk of snow during the winter time. And this goes back in the city code to the late nineteen eighties, at the time that that was put into place, like most other ordinance violations, if you failed to remove the snow, it was a criminal misdemeanor, that is, you could be arrested for it, you could be sentenced up to ninety days in jail, you could receive a fine for up to five hundred dollars. A couple of years after that ordinance was placed on the books, then the state legislature developed the idea of municipal civil infractions, the idea that maybe some things that were traditionally or historically criminal offenses were more appropriately addressed as civil infractions, and providing the judges with, with more authority to take more equitable action, that is, to order things to be done, to prohibit violations in the future, instead of just finding someone and kicking them out the door. So, after the idea of the municipal civil infractions was created then, going through our records and the, the city's records online, and back in the early nineties, say around nineteen ninety-four, the council actually adopted amendments to the ordinance that would have provided that all of the article that contains the snow removal language would have been a civil infraction. So although that was put into place at that time, probably as a, just as an oversight, because the code specifically provided that failing to remove the snow was a misdemeanor, that language was never taken off the books. So where it leaves us now is, you have a broad provision in this one section of the city code that provides that any violation of that section is a municipal civil infraction. But at the same time, we still have the old language pertaining specifically to failing to remove snow, that says that's a misdemeanor. So again, I think it's an oversight, this is really more housekeeping than anything else, substantive change, there aren't a lot of tickets that are written for this violation, but when it was brought to my attention, I just felt it was appropriate that we get this cleaned up. So, again, the proposed ordinance would delete or repeal the section of the code that provides that failing to remove the snow from in front of developed property is a misdemeanor, would clarify that failing to, to remove that snow would in fact be a municipal civil infraction. So, if you have any questions about what's on the books now, or what we're proposing to do, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you. We would recommend approval of the proposed ordinance on first reading.
Yes, Mike.
So basically, we're going to make the motion to repeal that one subsection, but then are we going to amend it to include the addition of the, it's a violation of...
Civil infraction?
Yeah, municipal civil infraction, or is that already contained in there?
It's already, we have both of them on the books already. So there's conflicting language, and we're going to get rid of the misdemeanor language. Okay, all right.
One thing I didn't notice was, we had more recently brought forward a, a portion of this, if you have three inches of snow or more, your obligation to clear the snow before the cessation of...
Twenty-four hours.
I'm sorry?
It was twenty-four hours.
Well, I think that that's, that's the overall normal thing, is you're supposed to, at the cessation of snow, you have to attend to it. And we ended up coming up with some language that was, like at three inches, that it was twenty-four hours, and it was sort of, what have we accomplished by doing that? So, and, but I didn't see any reference to that in here. Do you recall how long that was?
Yeah, it was just a couple of years ago, we did that.
Yeah.
We'll have to work maybe with the clerk's office to find out. I didn't find that in the information online. But what we're doing here would not undo or change anything that you did in that area a couple of years ago. And the only thing this is, this would address is taking the criminal language out of the court.
Right, I was just looking...
We had addressed it because of the handicap people that are in their motorized...
That's what brought it forward.
Many vehicles are already calmed.
Right, yeah.
And we were trying to make sure, especially down the main drags, that were being cleared, but...
Right, but I, I don't, I don't understand, I mean, if the rest of our language is within twenty-four hours of cessation, what have we accomplished by doing that, you know? So, no, we really mean it?
Yeah. I'm reading through this, I came across on, on this ordinance, I have a question for Bob. Notice to repair, for many, many years, we went fifty-fifty, do we still do that?
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
We have searched through the city charter to find that. Backland Rod was city manager, we had...
I know we did it in the eighties.
We have not done it for a long, long time.
But it was a running circumstance, yeah.
Even with that said, though, that's, there's no guarantees that a resident is going to step up and replace or repair a sidewalk, because they still may not feel it's one a priority, or two, if they're even in a financial position to do that. So even with that program in place, there's still some give and take with that.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be more likely that it could get done if there was, if a program was in place?
Absolutely.
I mean, we can special assess them one way or the other, so it's kind of a moot, moot circumstance.
But we were kind of going, you remember that, Glenn?
Yeah, yeah.
We did the fifty-fifty, if the tree has heaved some flags or whatever, then it's time to...
If the city tree heaves a flag, we replace it, because it's our tree, or the county tree, which the county's not going to repair it.
Right.
But we're aware of that, so we'll step up and make that repair. But there's many flags in this city that need repair that are not affected at all by trees or anything such as that manner.
Now, my recollection, Linden's version of when it would be triggered is if fifty percent or more of a frontage was damaged, that's when the fifty-fifty was available to take advantage of.
I don't remember that part of it.
Don't you?
I just think we should still try to have something along that line available.
If the council's interested, I developed a program very similar to that in my last community, where the city set annually specific amounts that we would set in the budget to spend on a fifty-fifty cost share for a sidewalk, and curb and gutter driveway replacement, drive approach replacements.
Or aprons, you mean?
Yeah, their drive, their apron.
Approach, yeah.
It's also called a drive approach. There were certain standards that had to be met for going out, the department or the public works supervisor had to meet with them, they had to get contractors' bids, or they could choose to have the city do it through a citywide contract, and we would bid it out for doing so. I can bring a similar program to the council for approval next year, and we can look at putting something like that into the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, allocating a specific amount of money for sidewalk repair cost share program.
Well, I'd like to, I have a, I do want it to be looked into, I think that it's a, it's a feature...
Well, the benefit of us overseeing it is economies of scale, I mean, if we do it comprehensively, you know, we assign so much per year, you know, then we can end up doing it as a big package and get some savings. That doesn't deal with this, though.
No, no, I just, because it was, it was just on, on this ordinance, and I spotted that, I wanted to bring that up while I was there.
Mike's going to make the motion.
Thanks for inviting me, Mike.
Make the motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance to repeal the city of South Line, quote of ordinances, section eighty-two dash seventy-eight, subsection four.
I'll support.
Further discussion? Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
That's the archetypal ask the time and you're told how to make a watch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He just wants to come.
Nice to meet you.
Run away.
All right, number three, consider requests that the mayor and council be provided with city-issued email addresses for city business.
I brought, oh, go ahead. I brought this up at the last meeting, bottom line is, I don't want to be responsible for having to save all the emails I've received on my computer in the event that we have to produce the emails. I've looked at other communities, Green Oak Township, goes through a, their cities, or the township servers, Lyon Township does. I don't understand why we use our personal email addresses for our city email contact, and it just makes it easier in the event that we have to produce or retain these emails if it's going through a city server. So that's why I brought the motion. Nowadays, technology is to the point where you can set it up in less than a minute to have any emails for the, that are sent to you to a city email address, forwarded automatically to your personal email address. I use it for the South Line Panthers, and it's a youth football organization. I'm thinking we should be able to do that with the city. So that's why I brought the requests, and I would like to move it, but if there's any discussion first.
Well, you're saying that it will, it just, it forwards automatically, and so it just comes through my regular emails?
Well, it goes through the city server, but it's automatically forwarded to your, whatever email account you want it to be forwarded to. So it's, it's, it's a matter of just setting it up, it's really simple nowadays to do it.
Or you can simply go to whatever the, the city site is and access it that way if you wanted to.
Right.
How does it work if you're going to send an email out to that server?
Well, that's something we'd have to look into. I don't know if it goes back to the city server to be sent out, or if, if it's forwarded to your personal email address, if you log into the city server, obviously, it would be going on to the city server.
It depends on how you're logging in. I have my personal email account on my phone and my iPad, which are my personals, and I also have the city's, which goes through the city's server. When it, what I do to make sure that I always have a record of what I have sent, when I use my phone or my iPad, I have it set up to where it carbon copies my city email account. So when I send something from a mobile device, it automatically sends a carbon copy duplicate of that email through the city server to my email inbox on the city server, so that could be set up on your personal accounts to where it did that, that way your outgoing and your incoming could go through the city's server.
Yeah, I mean, my work email, I send it out, and when I receive it, I reply, and it goes back through my work email server. So I'm sure there's ways of doing this, and that being an IT person, I'm sure that's something that we can look into relatively quickly.
I don't have anything against being looked into, but I, you know, I think it's, we got to learn some more about this. And it sounds like there's possibility of, you know, doing this okay.
And it, it's actually very simple, like in setting up the accounts, and in your case, Mayor Wallace, you, you do have two options, you can either log in to the remote access site for the city's server, or you can have it forwarded to your existing account, and that's just a matter of setting that up within the Outlook account on the Exchange server.
It really is straightforward, yeah.
Would there be any security concerns, and who would monitor, because it's coming from the city?
The only person that would monitor it is...
No, I'd say monitor the, the security issues, if there's any cyber hacks or secure networks, or...
That goes through our IT security, that's why we have an IT resource... That goes through our IT security. That's why we have an IT resource firm that has firewalls and, in place, as well as monitoring for any kind of hacks and that type of thing.
So, we don't all have to have a computer or a laptop or anything?
No, you can access it the same way you access your current email.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sick and tired of using my personal email account for...
I, I think the, the part of it that's the most important is if there's ever a FOIA request for gathering up information from everybody.
It's right there.
It's very simple to end up providing that then. And you don't have to have somebody scrutinizing your own personal emails, you know, where you, you have to pretty much make everything available to them, and they decide what's pertinent and what's not, you know?
Right, and it's the time and expense involved in doing that, too.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's why I brought it up.
Oh, it makes good sense.
I would like to make the motion that the council and the mayor start receiving, or have emails set up through the city.
I'll support.
Further discussion? Y'all, if you're say aye?
Aye.
I propose?
Glad I got rid of my flip phone.
Page you go.
Consider an approved form to be used for city manager performance evaluation. Is there any, anybody have any direction on this that you'd like to go?
No, it was, there was one that was suggested.
Oh, okay.
I provided the council three samples, one from Temple Terrace, Texas, one from Avita, Florida, and one from Bonner Springs, Kansas, all off of the ICMA Knowledge Network as requested for my performance evaluation, as there was not a consensus as to which form prior to this evening. Obviously, my performance evaluation is not on this evening's agenda, but we do need to establish which form will be used for the evaluation.
My personal favorite was the Temple Terrace, but I thought all, all three of them accomplished the goal.
I didn't have a preference. I, like you said, they all accomplish it.
Yeah.
It's how you wanna, how you wanna read it.
The ones actually nicely organized, though, in, in subject matter, you know, which kinda, there's some continuity in your answers there, where the other ones kind of...
Jumped around more.
Yeah, right. It's one that looks like, you know, it's about thirty years old, but...
Yeah. Done by a typewriter.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
What was fine with you?
The Temple Terrance, Terrace.
Okay.
Which one is that?
That's the one that...
That's the typewriter you want.
Clearly, it looks like it was on my, yeah. It's this one.
It's the last one in the packet. Or at least mine.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't care.
It's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
So, we have a consensus?
I'd like to see this at our next meeting, then.
Well, do we have a consensus on which one we're using?
I'd like to motion that we do use the Temple Terrace template.
I'll support, that's fine.
Further discussion? I'm looking at that. Is that A, B, C, or is that a number?
It's number.
Yeah.
I don't really see the scale on it. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, it's a one to five.
Okay. Alright. Y'all, if you're say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I propose?
I'm sure we can find an hour between now and the next meeting and get that over with.
What I will do is I will update it to where it says City of South Lyon and make it a more current format and send it out for everyone to fill out.
Okay.
Good.
Personally, I think that the first meeting in June's good enough. It's, I don't think we need to...
Is our next meeting on Tuesday?
To wait, uh...
Yeah.
I mean, to go that fast on it. I mean, it's, it's only four weeks away. I think that'd be a better timeframe. Bev would be back and so forth is the goal. Well, that's the way I see it.
Okay. I'd rather get it over with.
Our next meeting is on, uh...
We had to move it. Or did we, did we officially move it?
Yeah, we officially moved it to Tuesday.
Yeah, see, it's not that much further down, and, yeah, and Bev's back.
June eighth or last meeting in May?
I'd prefer to have it earlier.
Well, that gives time to, she has to redo it in a better format, so it doesn't look like it was thirty years old. And then send it to us and then make sure we get the evaluations in.
And like I said, Bev is, then we should be back by that first meeting in June.
You're also looking at it coming off of Memorial Day weekend.
I already did it, so I don't really care one or the other.
No, I don't care. Alright. I don't find what you need. I don't care.
Is there a second for June eighth?
I think we should wait for Bev.
Is that a second?
It sounded like a second.
That would sound like a second.
I still haven't officially heard.
I second that.
Okay.
You got that, Lisa?
Further discussion? Y'all, if you're say aye?
Aye.
I propose?
Aye.
Consider approval of the Lake Street Cruisin' application.
I will turn this over to Chief Collins.
There are representatives here that would like to address council. Before they do that, I should point out a couple of things from the application. One, it's in the recommendations section of the agenda note. It should be noted that the resident two sixteen East Lake Street did not sign off on a requested road closure. And there was a discrepancy in the mandated language in the insurance certificate, but I agreed to forward it for council's consideration anyway, given the time crunch. I understand the city attorney may have some input on that.
The city attorney may what? I didn't hear that.
More input.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
Is that that N-I thing?
That was some added language that was not in the city template, and despite two or three tries, it never came back exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have two issues. Chief Collins and I spoke about the additional insured language, and there is some additional language added, which states with respect to general liability. In other words, it's a limitation on the extent that the city would be an additional sure insured under the insurance policy. I would recommend that that be stricken and that they be required to do the language as provided for in the special event block party permit that all other applicants are required to use. In addition, in looking at this application, I noticed that the business entity named Lake Street Cruisin', I did a quick search of the state business licensing website and was unable to find that entity as a registered entity. So, that would be a contingency at the very minimum of moving forward with any type of approval. We would want some evidence and proof that this entity exists.
You understand that part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First of all, I'm Debbie Cook, and I represent the Lake Street Cruisin' Committee. I don't know which one you want to address first. I talked with my insurance person about the last few wordings in the description, and they are willing to change that if that's what's required by the city. So, I can have that reissued, striking those words.
The limitation, yeah.
Yeah.
Also, one of the things that we've encountered recently with some of the special events is I would like to receive, have the, have the city receive a copy of the policy that's issued. So, not just this accord certificate of insurance, but actual policy, the policy that's issued.
The entire policy?
We would like to receive a copy of that as soon as possible.
Okay. I don't think that'll be a problem, so, yeah, okay. Okay. And then the second part of this, we have applied for a 501(c)(4). So, that is in the process right now. We do not have it approved yet, but it has been applied for.
How did you get the, the insurance issued to something that doesn't exist?
I need help. This is all above my head.
Well, I think we were under the understanding that once it was in process, that it was, you were able to act upon it. And though we are finishing up the paperwork on that, we have correspondences going with the state or the fed, federal government, the IRS currently, and we're working things out this week.
Well, that, that's a tax, a tax issue where you're not a legal entity yet. So, until it's a legal entity, you can't have the tax thing, and you can't have the insurance either. I mean, we can't count on that legal entity being solid enough that we can rely on the insurance doing what it needs to do to protect the city, if you're not a recognized entity. And Tim's saying that he can't find it on the state's site, so...
It hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah. I mean...
How'd we do this last, oh, she was off the pumpkin fest or something?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we could approve it with, you know, contingent on them getting the designation, the entity designation.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So, what, the first question is, has, has this business entity been formed or filed with the state of Michigan?
Yeah, it has been. We, we...
Prepared the paperwork and sent it off to Washington.
Well, Washington is a separate issue. So, my first question is, has, has there been any incorporation or organizational documents regarding, with the state of Michigan? Because I don't think you're gonna get very far with the IRS if you don't have a Michigan entity established.
They haven't asked for it. They regarded that.
But...
They're still trying to work through whether we're a C-three or a C-four.
That was my other question, was the difference between the C-three and the C-four.
You know, it's interpretation. Most of all, their other car pubs and other things are usually C-three. This is all, and Washington thinks we're a C-four. And that's what we're looking through that issue right now.
So, have you, is this a corporation, an LLC, or some other partnership?
Association.
An association?
Right.
Okay.
Right, but don't they still need a tax ID code?
Have you been advised at all, are you seeking advice, legal advice, from anyone regarding the, the association or that entity?
Not legally. No, no orders involved. They actually made it very simple, although it's not, they, they had a long form that you used to fill out, then they made it easy for them. But as many forms as they filled out since the easy form, they should have probably just filled out the long form.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're going back and forth on their interpretation of what we're doing.
So, so really what I'm, I'm trying to, trying to figure out, if it's an association, is there a board of directors of this? Is there any type of organized entity outside of individuals that exists that you can help?
Well, we have...
Were you required to provide that to the insurance company?
Well, Deb's the secretary.
Yeah, we're, we, I mean, we, you know, I'm like the president, and we have the lights, breads, and treasure in secretary. And that's, that's...
But nothing legally.
That's the core group.
Okay. So, we should, I don't wanna take up too much of council time, but we'll need a resolution to that issue of some sort. And I think maybe a conversation outside of council meeting might be able to get us moving in the right direction.
So, are you saying you're willing to help us with this?
I'm willing to work with you on figuring out what's going on and how to satisfy the city's side of issuing the permit.
You can pay the man. You're, you have a rate, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, that would be a conflict of interest.
I'm still stricken with getting a insurance policy issued to something that doesn't exist. That's, that's weird.
We actually had, we were part of, we were part of Pumpkin Fest.
Pumpkin Fest before, right.
Mr. Mayor? I could clarify that.
Yes.
Their initial application did indicate on it, on the insurance certificate, South Lyon Area Pumpkin Fest. That's where the first problem developed. When I checked with South Lyon Area Pumpkin Fest, they said they were not part of this, and that the group did not have permission to use their insurance.
And that was only because we were under their policy for the year, and then it expired.
Mm-hmm.
Chief, what is, what is the house, where is the house, two sixteen? Which one is it?
I'm sorry, could you say it again?
Oh, no, I wasn't talking directly to you. Sorry. The two sixteen East Lake, where is that house?
It's a resident.
It's a residence, right?
It's a residence, the Donegan residence.
Which one didn't sign off on it? Which house is it?
That's the...
I'm not sure which one.
Oh.
It's two sixteen.
It's the one on the corner?
The monster house.
Okay.
Across from the church.
Okay.
Okay.
So, wait a minute. I mean, there's, I don't think that there's any, we can't approve this because, one, there isn't a legal entity in place, and two...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, can we approve with conditions? But I'm leery of doing anything without knowing what the status is. I mean, the bottom line is, they haven't filed anything with the state of Michigan to be recognized as either an association or an LLC or anything, so...
But I'm not sure an informal association is required to file with the state of Michigan.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, some of the questions I would ask you are, do you have a bank account? Do you have an organized, do you have a president, do you have a board that makes decisions? Is there documentation of your meetings? Can you provide that? Is it easily accessible? And if you, do you have a federal identification number for tax paying? I will need to see some of those, council will need to see some of that information in order to understand the existence of the association, because it does look as if you've gotten through the process of getting an insurance policy issued to this, to the association. What we don't have is evidence and documentation showing the existence of that, and I'm not sure what you provided to the insurance company. So, I think we can work through some of those issues. I think Councilman Kramer's comments and concerns are valid. I leave it to council whether you, I mean, I, I do understand that the first day is coming up.
Is that the last Wednesday of the month, right? So, it's right after Memorial Day.
Day after our next meeting.
It would be, be the day after our next meeting.
So, there's a federal ID, the association. So, if we, I mean, based on that, I mean, if we have proof that there's actually...
Well, in a bank account, yeah.
Yeah, bank account, board, federal ID that's registered for the association. And then, once we have some clarification, and you're satisfied with that, then we could, can we approve this with the conditions that they actually bring forth this documentation to ensure that they are a legal entity and that the insurance is valid based on the fact that they are a legal entity?
Right. So, it, it would seem that that information is consistent with them being able to submit to the IRS for a C-four, C-three designation. They've also gotten an insurance company to recognize that they're an entity that can be issued an insurance policy, and they have also signed the hold harness. So, with the change in the additional insured language, additional evidence of the association's existence, such as bank account information, some corporate or association records about your meetings and organization, and the FEIN, I think that, that should be able to get us where we need to go, as, as contingencies.
I hope you understand we're supporting you.
Yeah, we're just making sure.
You have a terrific program.
Right.
I mean, the contingency, we can approve the road closures and contingent to that stuff being provided.
On the requirements stated forth by the city attorney.
Yeah.
Okay.
And who's going to make sure that it is all in order before May twenty-seventh? The same person who made sure all of Elko's things were in order before the trees were cut down?
Well, that would be...
It needs to be clear.
Because you're giving an approval that's contingent on the completion of certain things, I guess I would, I would warn council that you're gonna have, probably have to have a special meeting if, we should set a deadline.
That's what I was thinking.
On which it's gotta be taken care of. If not, I would probably advise the city manager to call a special meeting, and you would revoke the approval because the contingencies have not been satisfied, to make it very clear that they have not... To make it very clear that they have not received the permit for the event.
Well, I, may I say that if, if we don't provide the proper documentation, we will not hold the event. If we're not legal, we don't wanna risk any.
Right, you won't have a closed road for one thing, so.
Correct. You may have a lot of cars driving to town and park wherever they want, but the, the roads won't be closed.
Okay, um, Joe?
Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You will have one more meeting before the first event. So if it's not taken care of by then, you would be able to act at your regular meeting.
The 26th, yeah.
And make it clear that they have not satisfied the contingency.
How much notice do we have to give the county for the closing of roads?
The county, yeah, the city does that.
Well, it's a county road.
County road, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe we work off the annual permit, actually. So I'm not sure that we have to give them specific advance notice. But Lisa normally deals with them on the individual permits.
I'd like to go back to the 216 house. Is there a reason that they didn't sign off?
I have been to their residence three times. And I feel, my understanding is the crux of the problem is an accident that happened back in September of last year. It was the day before the last car show. A car hit the tree that's in their easement next to the road. And when I went to ask him for approval to close the road down, he claims that one of the car show cars backed into his tree and is killing his tree. He had an arborist come out to look at the tree because the bark was all scratched off. And my husband and I explained to him what had happened about the accident with the car on the day before the car show. And I actually went and got him a police report because our car was involved in the accident. Because the car that hit his tree ricocheted off that tree and came to, to the westbound side of Ten Mile. And our car was parked in the last parking place on the westbound side in front of the RCA building. And it ricocheted off that tree and came back and bashed in the back of our car, which pushed our car into the car in front of us. So we were like sandwiched in between. And I had a police report with me, with all that information on it.
He just wasn't having any of it?
No.
Is that tree between the sidewalk and the street?
Yes. Yes.
Well, it's not his tree.
I, well, he claims it is. And that we damaged it. But that's not the case. It was an accident, a damage.
Well, I mean, the man's entitled to his opinion, but I don't wanna hold this up because of one guy like that.
No, it may have nothing to do, but if there was something that was, uh, something that could've been compromised on, I was hoping that you would make compromise on that, but an accident's an accident.
If you donated to the Little League baseballs, I, I think you might help out getting, he's the president of their, uh, 1,500 kits. Well, again, we determined it's not his tree either, so. Joe, do you have something?
Oh, no, I think it was, it was answered.
Okay. So we want to prove this with all the contingencies?
Yes. I'm, I'll make that motion. Uh, you know, you remove the limited aspect of the, the insurance policy and provide the documents, you know, for validating all the stuff that we need. And I'm good.
So is that the motion?
That's good. And I'm good.
No, but, I mean, I, I make the motion that we approve this contingent on those, those items.
I'll support it.
So the road closure then, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
For discussion? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed?
Looking forward to a good time.
Good luck to you and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
It's always.
I get a lot of people, really enjoy your show. Paul, you do a good job too.
Thank you. Could I just?
Fire away.
The council with something briefly. The host clubs, you, you know, it's not Lake Street Committee that necessarily puts this all on by ourselves. There are host clubs involved, many car clubs throughout the area. And I, I just wanna share something with you. The host clubs, the staff of Lake Street, uh, the DJ, have a significant and meaningful, you know, relationship with this city of South Lion. I just like to mention a few things. Pumpkin Fest, 30 years. South Lion Community Chest, 30 years. And these are donations. You know, by having events like this, it allows us to raise money that we donate back to the community. South Lion Car Show, 20 years, and that included over $25,000 in high school scholarship funds. Parade participation, Memorial Day and Pumpkin Fest. Cool Yule participants. Relay for Life donations, well over 2,000, closing in on $3,000 now. Active Faith donations, Operation Injured Soldiers, Lion Township, Paws for Cause, and Lion Township Fire Department. I just, I just want everybody to understand that it's not, we're not just having a ball. Yes, we do, but it's all for the right reasons, you know. We enjoy, we enjoy our relationship in the community and we give a lot back. So we'll, we'll make sure we come through with what you're asking for.
All right, Paul, thanks.
Thanks.
Yep. I'm Memorial Day Parade. Chief?
Nothing has really changed from previous years. Their paperwork was in order. They were notified and aware of the council meeting. I don't see the organizer here.
She is working.
But with her presence or without her presence, I would still recommend approval.
Yeah, she asked if, if she would leave work if she had to, and I said that was not necessary. Especially this is one of the longest running Memorial Day parades. Dearborn bragged about their 50th one. Well, we're down near double that, so. So we certainly want to.
I'll make the motion then that we approve the requested, uh, road closures for the Memorial Day Parade.
I'll second.
For discussion? I'm hopeful, I've received word that they're trying to get somebody to possibly film it for TV. I hope so. It was a shame that last year it was missed for the first time in 31 years. So hopefully, the cable group can get somebody to get that on. And with that, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, managers report?
I've got several things this evening. Um, wanted to let you know that on Wednesday, Lisa and I will be going to the MMRMA's Livonia location for FOIA training. The new FOIA law goes into effect July 1, and so we are gonna get trained on the new policies and procedures. I know, um, that Tim and his firm are working on developing the new policies that meet the new state law. And we will be bringing those forth sometime in June for adoption. But we're getting ahead of the game and making sure that we're trained and understand exactly what's necessary. And Chief Collins is also working with Carlito Young, who you're all familiar with, to make sure that we have some in-house training for staff members on the new FOIA law. Next Monday, Kristen Delaney and I are attending a free training that being put on by the MMM, by the MML on economic development and redevelopment in our communities. The keynote speaker is the author of the book Retrofitting Suburbia. It is primarily for communities that, um, have businesses that, and locations that need redevelopment. That training is taking place in Westland. And again, it is a free training and that's part of pushing Kristen to do more economic development and working with our business owners and property owners to see what we can do to increase our commercial and retail businesses in South Lion. Tomorrow morning, the South Lion Area Youth Assistance Program is having their annual recognition breakfast at St. Joseph Parish, and I will be attending on behalf of the city. I'm sure all of you received notification of that. I don't know how many of you are attending. On Wednesday evening is the next Pumpkin Fest meeting at 7:00 PM in the Police and Fire Training Hall and the Training Building for the Police Department. I know they are seeking volunteers for several of the chairmanships of the different committees on Pumpkin Fest. So if there's anybody in the community that would like to attend and step up and volunteer for Pumpkin Fest, they would be happy to have you there.
Will you repeat that date again?
Wednesday, that is May 13th at 7:00 PM in the Police and Fire Training Hall. And the last thing is the item we were discussing earlier. I did find in the bottom of my packet, the email communications we had from Mr. Corliss about his canine rescue, um, event that he would like to have take place in July out at the Northwoods Bar. As I had mentioned, they're asking for a waiver of the $50 application fee for special events. But in my discussions with Chief Collins, there is some concern that the adjacent business will, um, not sign off on the permit application for the process. So that is a concern. It's also going to be obviously adjacent right next to a residential area with an outdoor event. They're talking bands, car show, um, different things like that. So there may be residents in the adjacent, uh, Carriage Trace residential housing development that may not want to sign off on that as well. So it is up to the council to decide whether they want to waive the fee for this nonprofit organization or not.
Is it okay if Harvey makes a comment?
Yes.
My comment on this is that people who come before council, uh, for permits, and they're all 501(c)(3)'s and they're all, uh, organizations that are doing good. If we, if we waive for, for these folks, I think we're gonna be asked to waive for everybody. And I, the more I thought about that, the more I thought that was just a bad idea. Thank you.
Yep.
That's a very good point. Nope, I don't have anything else.
Lynn, could you comment about City Cleanup Saturday?
Ah, yes. Uh, this Saturday, the 16th, is the city beautification.
Sprucing up.
Sprucing up. Beautification, sprucing up, not cleaning up. We, uh, like to believe that the Department of Public Works and our city residents keep the city in good shape as it is. But we are doing a citywide sprucing up, as Bob calls it, uh, this Saturday morning. And we would love to have as many volunteers as possible come out. I know that, uh, Bob is going to do some cooking. And I think Harvey, are you helping out with the cooking on Saturday? So we look forward to seeing as many people out there as possible.
Hey.
Thank you.
Mike?
I wanna thank everyone that, uh, bought flowers Sunday from the Boy Scouts on Mother's Day. Especially wanna thank my wife, who worked 8:00 to 5:00 PM.
Jeepers.
Mother's Day, selling flowers.
Wow.
Maria, sorry, Happy Mother's Day. Um, but, uh, I have to make it up next weekend, so, thank you.
Harvey?
Uh, thank you. Uh, as we run up to Memorial Day, the veterans, both the VFW and American Legion, are gonna be selling poppies within the next couple of weeks. Buy a poppy, all that money goes to support veterans. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
Uh, yes, I wanted to just touch briefly and point out for the record that, um, I was a little, I don't say disappointed, but shocked to see that we have another closed session meeting today. And just for the record, I look back and of the last seven meetings we've had, this will be the fifth meeting out of seven regular city council meetings counting tonight that had a closed session. So I, I asked for some clarification. I never received it, but that's a whole separate issue about the intent of tonight's meeting. But I just think going forward, we need to be, um, not so liberal in having closed sessions. And, um, yeah, that was my comment on that. Uh, also on more positive note, uh, looking forward to seeing everybody at the garage sale coming up. And, um, reminder that Relay for Life is May 30th. Thank you.
Are you putting stuff up for the garage sale?
Yes, and I will be having a garage sale at my house for, uh, Team David A. Brandon Foundation for Relay for Life. So stop by, thank you for reminding me. Uh, please stop by my subdivision.
Buy my junk.
Oak Creek Village. 212 houses, all closed together, perfect garage sale hunting. So, thank you.
The whole town's gonna be that way. Aaron?
Can we let the city ordinance man, is that what his title is?
Ordinance officer.
Ordinance officer, okay. Could we have him nudge Providence to cut their vacant lot? They're usually good neighbors once they're nudged for the first time. So if somebody could do that, please. And then, um, right before the meeting, I received, um, I mean, uh, an email. I'm sure you all got it, but I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it. It looks like, uh, the election went well. And we had a pretty good turnout for that election. That was, that was a pretty big turnout. Yeah, it was way more than I expected for percent wise. So, um, Lisa thanked her, um, election workers, but I think we should also thank Lisa. Thanks, Lisa.
You're awesome.
You're awesome. And that's all. I'm good.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, first off, is the illusion sprucing up the city some reference to us being a tree city?
We have a new tree.
All right.
You gotta plant that on Saturday.
And Mike, I bought my flowers from the Boy Scouts on Saturday, so no one had to sit there on Sunday. On, uh, Saturday, the Tube Mill had their employee appreciation day. And they were kind enough to invite people from city council if they had an interest to go take a look at the plant. And it was very, very impressive. It's, it's huge to see it from the exterior. It's equally as huge and awesome from the interior. It's just one big doggone cavity that an awful cool process is taking place. The, what they do there is really extraordinary, and for them to have been doing it for as long as they have is a real compliment to their efforts and has been an economic boom for this community. Uh, I mean, between that and the elevator, I can't imagine why else, so, you know, the railroad tracks, of course, but why else South Lion would've grown had those two things not been here, so. But they were very kind and, and, and they were very kind and patient in explaining the process over there. And the new stuff that, that we had given the abatement for, um, is really paying off. There, there's a little lull in the action now, so they're a little reduced roster, but they're still making money and, um, they look forward to things growing again, so.
Did you get, did you find out how many are working at the Tube Mill?
Yes, it's like 200 now, and they top out at about 280, I think.
Okay.
So I think they're down 83 people, if I'm not mistaken, so.
But the tour was towards the newer facility and.
Yeah.
And that was, that was pretty amazing.
Yeah, yeah. The, the old stuff, you know, where the furnaces and stuff.
Choke them steel this wide and get to this.
Well, I mean.
Stretching it.
People typically end up seeing the trucks coming in with the bar stock on there. And it's about probably a three-inch diameter piece of bar stock that's like 50 feet long. And they chop that thing up and make it into all different sizes. There's no material lost in the process. So it's not like they drill a hole through this or anything. It's all extrusions and, um, heating up and it, it's really pretty fascinating. And their ability to, to service customers, they can do small order things and charge a significant price because of the specialty that, that people are asking for, but they can turn it around and have turned it around historically for a long time. So rather than doing, you know, competing with China, making zillions of things, they make a particular number of things that are special orders and have to happen fast, so. They were all very kind over there. I'll say it again, because it was really nice to see. I mean, then they were very gracious and, and patient in showing us all that stuff. And some cool old photographs. Uh, Larry Ledbetter, you know, I mean, he knows this place inside and out. And he provided an awful lot of really nice graphic photos. That's all, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Bob, where are we at on getting the streets painted and crosswalks done?
County's gonna do it for us. Put in the application, probably been three weeks. Talked to the gentleman the other day. He said things should be done happening momentarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, from what I understand, you know, we've had a, we had a clash last weekend on the four corners between organizations. And, uh, an organization out of Royal Oak, I believe, was able to parade, and they actually tried to run off our VFW people. And, uh, I take a front to something like that. I think that, I don't know if there's any way that we can make it where, I, I was told that because they were a 501(c)(3) or whatever that is, they can just do that. They can just go there. But I don't, I don't think so, because like Walmart determines who goes in there and they have to have, they want 501(c)(3)'s also. They don't let any old organization go in. and they have to have, they want 501(c)(3)'s also. They don't let any old organization go in there. I don't know why we can't do something about protecting our local groups, and I just...
Mr. Mayor, I could elaborate on that.
Uh-huh.
And the city attorney, I'm sure, can elaborate even further on my comments, but the group that you're talking about, Second Chance Network, did notify the police department, actually request permission to be there, like I do with every single group, including, including the locals. I said, "The police department cannot and will not give you permission to be out there, because the moment we do that, we accept the liability for your safety." There's also a Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals decision called Speed et Al versus Shooty in which a anti-begging ordinance, similar to our prior begging ordinance, was struck down on constitutional grounds. That's the reason that we enacted the aggressive begging ordinance. That group was not in violation of the aggressive begging ordinance, and we paid particular attention, including sending out marked cars, unmarked cars, and the chief himself to observe the Second Chance Network group to make sure that they weren't obstructing with or interfering with traffic. Had they been, they received prior notice that they would have been ticketed for those activities.
Including their orange cones?
When we saw those orange cones, that's the one pass they were given. They were told that they couldn't put any signs, cones, or anything else in the roadway. Those were immediately moved. The disadvantage that we are at is that historically, we have not told our own local groups, "You can't be in the roadway." Therefore, and I think that this group was actually looking for us to tell them no, to make us a test case and perhaps take us to court. So, we were walking a very fine line between trying to cooperate with our local groups in the past and then not violating the constitutional rights of this quote-unquote outside group.
No, they look pretty rummy.
They did, they looked pretty rummy.
Yeah. You can't judge by looks. Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that up for obvious reasons, because there was some real conflict there, so hopefully...
I thought they had to have a permit. That's what surprised me, so...
The, the difference there, if I may, is they were not going door-to-door soliciting, for which they would have needed a permit. And again, under the speed decision, the, the city attorney may wish to jump in. We couldn't stop it unless it became aggressive begging or interference with traffic.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's that. Again, reminder, the citywide garage sales this weekend, you do not need a permit from the city to have a sale from Thursday to Monday of this week, or Sunday, rather, of this week, and also, again, the cleanup taking place, too. So, there's a lot of stuff going on around town. We need help on that, too, so, all right? With that...
Well, we, we meet here at 9:00, right, on Saturday? Is that right for the cleanup?
Yes.
Spruce up.
Yeah.
Sure is.
Do you wanna be a division leader?
Oh, yes, spruce up. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I just show up and they tell me what to do.
Okay. All right, with that, we can, we end our regular council meeting, but we do need to go to a closed session, so we're gonna close this part of the meeting now after 1 hour and 55 minutes.
Need a roll call vote.
And roll call vote to go into closed session. Well, somebody make this motion.
Kevell?
Yes.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Kramer?
Did you do Kapkowski?
I did her because she was standing in front of me.
Okay.
So, I said her name first.
She's gone rogue.
She's leaving.
Yeah.
Man, it's like a meat locker.